Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty four Scarborough Board of Education Workshop. Can we call the attendance, please?
Sure.
Mrs. Gammon.
Here.
Ms. Kazalonis.
Uh, she's been excused.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Ms. Leong.
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom.
Here.
Mr. Arpinian.
Here.
Mr. Peenihuff.
Here.
Ms. Leisure.
Here.
And Mr. Shumway.
Here.
Wonderful. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright, agenda item four point O is a workshop and four point one is defining the student representative position on the school board. So to give a little background, when the board met to review goals and or no, I'm sorry, not goals, to review our self-evaluation and to really take a look forward for the next six months, I'm like, we were really looking at where we can be a little bit more strategic. And so that led into a conversation about the student representative roles and how we could make it a little bit more meaningful for the students, right? And so that they get a little bit more out of it and that it, the, the experience is just a little bit deeper for them. And so we thought this would be a good time for us all to talk about that and kind of look at where we can make some changes. I do know, Nate, I know you have some ideas, not to put you on the spot, but I thought maybe we could start there.
Sure.
What's some of the things you had been mentioning?
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the things that struck me about the conversation getting underway was how that might fit into our extended learning opportunity program or our career pathways program as an extended learning opportunity. If you're not familiar with that program, or what an ELO is, generally, an extended learning opportunity is sort of this experiential fieldwork-driven learning opportunity that has a lot of different shapes and forms. Typically, it comes together because we've got a collection of experiences that are gonna jive well in terms of what a student might be interested in. So the student has a hand in shaping it, and then we kind of pull together some of these things that we might have. In this particular case, I think the board, the school board rep could be a really good kind of core experience. And then we could kind of wrap the things around that based upon what the student goal might be. If it's an interest in, you know, serving, you know, what does a representative do? That might look a little different than, I think it's gonna be something probably civics or social studies oriented. But it might be, it might look different if it's like, I want to understand how local government works versus state or federal or whatever. So I think the student would have a hand in shaping it, but it would be kind of this core experience that we would, we would have to figure out how to assign credit and all of that. The nice thing about that is it also comes with some built-in accountability measures. And it's also credit bearing, which I think could entice more students to do it. So there's a couple in terms of accountability, like we have a staff person at the high school who checks in on that. That's developed as part of the plan, what are the checkpoints, what are the benchmarks, what are the deadlines, that kind of stuff. There's usually kind of big celebrations built into that at some point along the way. So it just offers an interesting way to kind of combine some things that, you know, that we've got in terms of programming that might meet the board's needs in terms of trying to really think about this position and get, help people get more out of it.
And it, cause I'll ask one hundred and eighty-five questions.
No, I guess my question would more for Colby.
Okay.
So you can just.
Okay, does anybody have questions on this for right now?
Not just one, I think it sounds great. Yeah.
Yeah, like on the surface, it sounds really. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question. I was wondering if it would just, if it were to be an ELO, if students who weren't interested in that program could also still do it? Or if it would just strictly be an ELO opportunity?
I think it's something that this team, I mean, I'm, I think it'd be something this team would want to talk about here and now in terms of what the board's goals are for that position. I don't know. I mean, that was just an initial thought I had. It doesn't have to be the direction we go. But it, again, it builds in some of that accountability. It lets us wrap around additional learning, supplementary, complimentary type stuff. But if that's not a direction the board wants to go, I think we could probably have another conversation about how to, how to enhance that experience too.
Is there something you're thinking that?
No.
Like there would be a concern with it being an ELO?
No, not at all. I was just strictly, I was just curious.
Because if, I'm not, I'm not as familiar, and I, I don't know, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but with the yellow, with any, with, right, it's, it's, it's just only a few years since I was up at school. Alright, right, just right, right around the corner. But is, if someone, or is there, would there be a concern, do you think, if someone participated in the ELO, ELO program? That it would take away from other credits that they might want to take? Like, is there anything you're thinking of that way? Like, what would make someone not want to take the ELO path and still be a school board member?
Oh, I'm not sure. Like, well, I mean, I didn't, well, I'm just thinking about, like, me personally. I didn't do this because I was interested in, like, civics or government. I did it more because I wanted to be, like, more involved with, like, stuff that happens at the school, like, as a student. You know, rather than, like, I'm interested in, like, pursuing civics or government in the future. So I was just thinking, like, there, there, I think there's some students that would, I don't know how to phrase it, but like, there's some students that are more interested in that aspect rather than, like, a government or civics, like.
So maybe they're not interested in a public service, but per se, like, a politician, but.
Like, being more involved in, with the schools and stuff and, like, policy and.
Maybe if it's not, like. Framed in a particular way, you know, you know, like, you're getting credit, that's great.
Yeah, that's true.
And you're getting the experience no matter what.
Yeah.
But I, but I wouldn't, you know, you know, maybe that is a concern. Maybe kids that don't understand all the, I, I, you know, maybe who have a different motivation, they still could easily get civics credits, right? And that's.
It would be an ELO credit.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, it would just be, it'd be more of an elective credit. Really, the, the way I kind of think of it, our ELO stuff, for lack of a better term, is it really kind of lives, it just sort of lives in a, as, you know, in like a, like a catalog almost. And as a student maybe comes forward and thinks, you know, hey, this, you know, it could be a leadership thing, right? It would just be this core experience. And then how the rest, the shape of the rest of it would really sort of be something that you and the career pathways coordinator shape. It doesn't necessarily, I mean, I think it lends itself naturally to civics and, and government and that kind of stuff. But if we wanted to take a leadership studies angle on it or something of that sort, it could go in a lot of different directions. This would just sort of bring it into the career pathways ELO world. And when it would come up, right, there would be, we'd have to talk about how the board's process intersects with that. But I think this would kind of, you know, we would have these reps every year, there'd be a rep that would be picked for the, for the position. And the, the conversation at the building level with that rep would be, well, what do you want out of this? You're doing this, you signed up for it, but what do you want out of it? And it might look different kid to kid, right? The senior rep might want this angle, the junior rep might want this angle. They both have this shared experience, but the, the complimentary experiences and fieldwork that we wrap around that would kind of define what it would be. So it, it would just sort of give us a tool to play with in our catalog of, of, of career pathways and ELOs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. I guess I wasn't too familiar with how the ELO program worked.
It's really student-driven. Typically, there's a student that expresses an interest in something. We kind of talk, look at what we've got. And then there's a conversation around the student goals, what experiences we have that make the most sense in support of that goal. And then we kind of build it from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, an example is each year at the middle school, we have an ELO student who comes down and works with a teacher in the classroom. So I could even see this role as maybe part of, that they spend a little time, the student rep spends a little time at the middle school and has a chance to talk with middle school students.
I love that, too. I think that would be real, like, a really great, like, thing to start.
And it kind of formalizes your commitment, right?
Exactly.
Because if you're going, you know, to put a lot of time and effort into this work, it would be great to be able to acknowledge that
Yeah.
in a way that you earn credits and, you know, and again, I think that's a great idea in terms of, right, how do you go and visit the schools and get that information that you provided in the report, right?
Yeah, cause some, cause sometimes it's.
In a way that you're, like, living the experience versus just getting it from somebody else.
That's what I, that's what I was gonna say. Yes, sometimes it's kind of hard to, like, I don't know, like, connect with
Yeah.
the information, I guess.
Yes.
Yep.
No, that's a really, I, I think what we were talking about is that since COVID, I think that the position has moved to more like an email relationship between you and the principals and Colby and the principals.
Yeah.
Not that that's a bad thing, but there's this opportunity, I think we could, we could give you more, right? And there's this real opportunity, in my mind, I was wondering if maybe even during advisory or study hall, they could go over to the school and spend time. Like, maybe that's a piece of it, right? And they go over and sit with the middle school principal and you could experience whatever's happening at the middle school that you were allowed to, that you then come back and report back to the whole board, right? Versus just this, like, email exchange that's currently happening.
Yeah, I think that's a really great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, yeah, the only thing is it's hard for us to prescribe. Like, we don't really have a prescriptive. We might have a couple of ones that are, seem to have some interest. It's hard for us to prescribe it in the abstract without a student, a specific student with a specific goal
Right.
sitting in front of us. So again, I mean, it doesn't have to be a path that we take. I think it would be a really interesting ELO. And again, I think it might attract some kids, since it would be credit bearing. But it doesn't have to be. I think if we're gonna go, if we're gonna go in a direction of more prescribing this and really fleshing it out, maybe the ELO won't go, it won't exist there, just because that's probably our most flexible form of credit. It's certainly one of our most flexible forms of credit. But the student rep, the student is really like a, a important stakeholder at the table, kind of. And it's really the, the career pathways person kind of thinking about, these are all the partnerships, these are all the experiences I know we've got that I can, I can deliver on. And then the student is, you know, this, this is my goal, this is what I want to get out of it, and those two things kind of meet, and that's how the credit comes to be. In addition to sort of, these are the checks, and this is the work, and these are the standards and all that kind of stuff. So it's hard to prescribe exactly the shape it would take, other than outside of this core experience.
Yeah.
So if the board is, if the board is looking to get more specific, it may be a matter of, you know, may, may want to go a different route than calling it a yellow. I mean, I could, I, I didn't bring anything to sort of show you in terms of paperwork, but it really is, you know, to develop an ELO, it's pretty flexible. You know, outside of a core, outside of a goal and a couple of experiences.
So what would that look like from our end? You get a student whose, you know, Grace is interested. Do, does the, who's the, what did you call the person that they're?
Career Pathways Coordinator, yeah.
Okay, the Career Pathways Coordinator. Do they work with the chair to express what their interests are and then we kind of?
I think the board, if we were to go that route, I think the board would drive what this experience, this part of the experience is, this is what we want for us, this is what we want a student rep to be doing. What we would provide at the high school would be the, the other experiences around that that would enhance the student's goal. I think that's the way I kind of view it, because at the end of the day, the student rep position is really in the hands of the board in terms of what those responsibilities are and what the hourly commitment is and all that kind of stuff. What we could provide is, you know, complementing that with a, with a set of experiences that allow, that are consistent in what the student might want out of it. Yes, I have this job description, essentially, this is what the board tells me I need to do, these are some other things I want to get out of it. You know, maybe that's, maybe that's going to the State House, right, and following a state, or whatever the case may be, depending on the student's goals. But we would look to build a complete, a complete experience around the student's goals and around what the board wants for the position.
And they can do two, because we have two-year seats, that would be, would they get credit for two years?
We would just have to figure that out. I mean, I haven't had any in-depth conversation about it. I think it's, I'm not aware of any other board or school that's, that's doing it like this. But I do think it fits really well in with the philosophy of that program. And so I don't, you know, I'm not, that doesn't scare me that other places aren't doing it. I think we would just have to sit down and really look at the details. What I'm kind of talking about here, I know, is broad strokes. It's probably the best I can give you at the time, you know, at least right here and now. We would just need to flesh it out. I think what we would need from the board is, what is a really clear description of what the student rep is doing? What's the time commitment? What are the responsibilities? Like, what are you gonna embed in this position? And from there, so that at least the student knows, this is what I'm signing up for in terms of my responsibilities to the board. I think from there, we would meet with the student and say, what else, what are your goals? These are the board's goals for you. What are your goals? What do you want to get out of this position? And then again, we would, we would augment that with other experiences that we would provide, you know, through our connections and our partnerships and our relationships.
How is it pitched currently to entice students to become student reps?
I mean, I don't, I don't think there's a huge sales pitch. It goes out in terms of, like, you know, where there might be interest. There's not a big, this is not a big pitch. We're, we draw from a fair, a fairly narrow pool, I would say. I think if it becomes credit bearing, I mean, I would say the ELO, the interest in the ELO program and the career pathway is growing, a program is growing in general. And I think this would be something, you know, and I think it's a great way for kids to, kids are doing things, you know, that's, that's the cool part about that program is not just learning about something, they go out and they do something, whether that's a, you know, fieldwork or some, you know, some, part of some profession. So it would, it would instantly, I think, add more of a draw, just because we have more kids signing up for that program these days.
Yeah.
When are the elections currently driven?
It's April.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, because we're trying to advertise for a school board position, too. I mean, maybe we could replicate some of the, some of the material for, I mean, if we're going out and doing an effort to get.
Yeah, cause so what happens, what we typically do is we, we, this is the responsibility or the job of the senior rep.
Yeah.
So in this, in our case right now, Colby. So Colby would be able to, with the help of Nate, and this will be your first year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in the past, Sue, right? They, it, it's the senior rep's responsibility to meet with the principal to kind of establish how this process is going to go and how they want to run the, run the advertisement for it. So what I remember Gabby Gifters, for example, asked for videos, like, she wanted people to make short little clips and explain why they wanted the role.
Yulia did too.
Yulia did that as well, right? So I, I think, and maybe I'm thinking of Yulia and not Gabby. But do, everybody has kind of made it their own and, and advertised it and announced it on their own. So Colby knows that his, the expectations there. And so when you talk about laying out the expectations, that, I think, if we kept that, that would be one, right? Where it's the senior rep's responsibility to do that. And maybe, maybe he partners with comms and figures out, you know, where is there overlap for this year, for sure.
Be good, you know.
Yeah. And you very well, like, in my mind, first off, I think this is phenomenally innovative. And so the fact that you have thought about this and brought this forward, I think is absolutely amazing. This is a huge time commitment, and we're asking kids to come twice a month, every month, for two years. And then one of those times, it's a workshop before that, and then we ask them to serve on a committee. And so it's, that's in addition to the two meetings. So there's a lot that they're giving of their time. And sometimes that means that, you know, there's other things happening that might interfere, that they might miss something to be here, or this, you know, that, that's a lot. It's, it's a big responsibility. And so I think giving them credit is really, really huge. I, I am a hundred percent on board with it.
And I think the, those are the things we would want to know, like, in terms, those are, right, those are the details we would definitely want to be aware of.
Yeah.
In terms of determining how much credit, when exactly to award, all that kind of stuff. You know, those are the things we would need to know in order to flesh this out some more.
Yeah.
God, it's like ten hours a month anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a commitment.
Does the student have a choice on the committee that they choose? So that could be, that could be part of the experience, too. You'd pick the committee that fit with the goal.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, because you very well might have someone that comes in, I'm coming, Colby, in just one second. You very well might have a student that comes in and says, I'm really, I really want to do this, but my interest is in communications. And so if that's the case, that they come in and their pathway with the high school looks like reporting and looks like media work and looks like film work, right? And then here, they work on the communications committee and they're writing newsletter articles. You know what I'm saying? Like, I think, and you might have someone who wants to do leadership, and you might have someone that wants to do public service. So it's, if it's totally student-driven, it's going to look different. And so to your point, when they pick their committee, right, it's prob, it's hopefully aligns with what their interest is. Colby.
Are you able to let him?
Oh, Colby, ready for you? We're ready.
Yeah. I was gonna perhaps bring up the idea of the student rep maybe being paid in the future, too, just because of, like, all the time commitment. And that, like, it's basically like a board member still, and I, I mean, it's not, it shouldn't be, like, too much. But I mean, the board gets paid, too, so I don't see why a student rep shouldn't be paid also.
I think, I think having the ELO, if it's an ELO, like, getting the, attaining the credits for it is kind of a good way.
Right, right, that's getting it, yeah.
Right, no, it would.
So, Colby, we, we did look into that on the finance committee at, at, because you had mentioned that a while back. So we, we, Kate and Diane looked into it, and I can't remember all the specifics behind it. I have to go back. Oh, you remember?
Yeah.
Freyla, take it away.
The payment and remuneration for board members is actually part of the town charter. And so we, if we were interested in doing that, it would really be part of that charter process, which unfortunately doesn't happen that often. It just happened last year, but it's certainly something that, if people are aware, remember of the next town charter process, that would be the place to do that, because the board has no, there's no budget or ability to appropriate funding for payment. So like, when you're talking about funding government, anything having to do with the government or, or town, local municipal agency, you have to have a line item in your budget dedicated for that payment, which is tied to a funding source. And so for remuneration for board activities, that comes through the town. The town charter is the mechanism in order to get the funding to do that. So we would have to go through that process for you as well, which is not a board process, it's actually a town council process. I mean, it's actually bigger than that. The town puts together a committee, they study the charter, they make recommendations, and then voters vote on those recommendations. And it certainly could fit in there, but that, that would be the mechanism to do it legally.
And is there a question for Nate on that? Is there any conflict with receiving pay for credits?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we, if we issue credit, I think for the, as part of the experience, we would essentially be paying a student to go to school, which is not something. We do.
Yeah.
And I'm actually thinking that's very comparable to, like, so I run an internship program at my current employment. At my last employment, we offer paid internships in the summertime or unpaid externships during the school year for school credit. And so that, that's very, that's a fairly normal process for people to get credit instead of payment, and those things will look equivalent for people in positions like this.
Yeah. I think, I think the credit opportunity is honestly better, because honestly, by the time you divide out all the hours, it would be not all that much.
Well, yeah, I think, I think there, yeah, you're, you're definitely, you know, if you think about the hours that we're working a week and the stipend we're getting. Well, yeah, I think I think there, yeah, you're you're definitely, um you know, if you think about the hours that we're working a week and the stipend we're getting. It's definitely pennies a if. If there's a negative, if we can assign a negative salary, we're probably there, right? Like, we're not talking about huge amounts of money here. But what I I'm I'm always interested in is how we create these opportunities for students to really develop and grow in a path that's unique and and good for them. And that's what this is. That's what we're saying here is this is this really unique opportunity to create an experience that's meaningful. Per child, per, you know.
Yeah.
Per their per their goals and their hopes and their dreams.
That serves the public interest.
Yeah.
You know, still at the same time.
And it allows them to like personalize their experience to get that.
Yeah.
Well, and you can develop a lot of skills. There's a lot of opportunity for skill building when you think about like bringing young people into a professional setting. Like the idea of running a meeting, Robert chose a boarder as much as even the board needs education on that, but learning that process, being familiar with the terms.
Yeah.
Be familiar with the process, um being responsible for public speaking, um creating records, understanding that. Like there is actually a lot of soft skills that are very helpful that will serve you well. Because when you're asked to be on a board and you don't know anything about that, um for your first opportunity, that can be a very challenging position. And I think there's value when you've done, when you've practiced it and starting earlier, you know, is always better. The more the more you learn, the better you are, the more equal you are to accomplish whatever vision you're trying to accomplish.
Yes, I would support an ELO. Uh we just have to figure out the specifics on what we want them to do.
Yeah.
Definitely be a balance between tight and loose in terms of what your job description is for for the school board reps. The more you put in, like the more hours, right, and the the less flexibility the student has to maybe personalize around it. So that would be a balance. I think you might wanna you might wanna really consider as you as you visit and revisit any existing documentation or drop any new ones. You know, how much like, you know, I'm thinking about what Kathy suggested. Is that something we write in or is that something we leave out and, you know, say, this could be this, right, if it fits the student's goal? So you're gonna wanna think about that, I think, as you as you draw that out.
Yeah, because it's been pretty, it's pretty loose right now, pretty.
Yeah, can we have a an example, like a like a, you know, like a program that's written out that we could look at to kinda?
For you mean for like a board, you mean for the ELO side or for a board rep position? Yeah, I could I could pull some stuff and and send it to you. Like this would be a big one. I just to be honest with you, we don't have a. We don't have like a two-year ELO, like this one would essentially be. Um typically, they're offered in semesters, um and we offer semester credit for it. Um but based on the amount of hours, you know, the time commitment, we're talking about things beyond that as well in this two-year experience. Um yeah, I mean, I could give you something, but I don't think it would I don't think it would exactly approach what we're talking about here. This would be a little now.
I think I have a a would it make sense if we came up with a list of things that we have that would have to happen?
Yes.
So you would need to attend this on these dates. We would want you to do this policy.
That would be a great start.
Sort of a menu of options of ideas we have that are not you have to, but things that we are thinking might be valuable for students, would be valuable for the board. And then that could be kind of a guide. I'm thinking almost like a menu of options, so the student could have an idea. Cuz I can't imagine that most sophomores are coming to you with fully formed ideas about how they're gonna function.
Yep.
On a school board. Make a lot of sense. And um and so that would be sort of a starting place. So would that be helpful for us to draft up sort of like what we would have to see?
Yeah.
And what we would like to see and sort of go for. But I think that would be better than you trying to figure out what we're thinking.
As much as I know you probably could do that, you may have other things you need to work on.
That's why I that's why I thought this discussion was important.
Yeah.
First, because in my time here in Scarborough, we haven't had a discussion like this. It's just been who might work best. You know, and so I think it's really important that you get down what your expectations are, so that those are really clear. And then I think we can work around those other things to to make it work. But I think this is a good way to do it because the students will get some return on their investment, so to speak, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could it could present interesting challenges too. And I don't think I wouldn't, I don't wanna be blind to that, like sometimes ELOs don't work, right? Like sometimes, so there's and it it is sort of entangling two different worlds to some degree. But tho- those would just be things I think we would have to work through. Um I don't, I'm not aware of like it not like it not it not working out for a student rep. Like you haven't had one who's done a year and not come back, right? So that like that, those are the kinds of things that we sometimes deal with in like a credit world, like.
Yeah.
Hey, the course isn't working, the course is too much. I wanna drop this, I wanna drop that. So those are things we might have to work through um on the fly a bit, but it's it's good that that's the case, right? That there's pretty good continuity of students starting and finishing this gig.
I think the nice thing about this, though, is the opportunity. There's so many opportunities for leadership, like you said, if they wanna do communications or what, you know.
Law and policy.
Policy stuff.
Finance.
There's just so many avenues, but finance types things, yeah. So I think that's what makes it makes it perfect for this. Um situations because you could really mold it. I think that's where the wraparound is.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, I think the wraparound is, you know, you know, you're gonna be in this group, you're gonna be on this board. What what are some of your interests to? Is it finance? Is it polis public policy? Is it communications? And then I think that's what we wrap around, what some of the framework goals that you have are. Like you've gotta be at the meetings, you've gotta, you know, be on a committee, you've gotta, you know, give reports. You you know, some of those framework things you'll have to come up with. And then I think the wraparounds are those other things. Do are you interested in finance, communications, policy, public policy, you know?
Yeah, because that's really, I mean, quite frankly, up until this point, that really describes their responsibilities. They attend two meetings a month, they pick a committee, they give a report once a month.
Yeah.
The junior rep does the K two and the Wentworth School, the senior rep does the middle school and the high school.
Are the reports wide open or are they only on after-school activities or could it be anything?
It can be anything, yeah. But right now, they do you wanna talk about how the experience you've had so far?
Sure, um I well, I've just emailed the all the primary school teachers and then um I look on the Wentworth newsletter and get my information about Wentworth from there. So there's a variety of stuff, like there's some a- after-school activities, but I'd say for like K through two, most of it is like in school. And like, you know, they've had like spirit weeks and like special visitors. Like I think the fire department came in a couple of weeks ago. Um so I'd say at least for K two and Wentworth, it's mostly like in school stuff.
So it's basically like a phase level report, so what's the, you know.
But I think for middle school and high school, it's more after-school, like sports and clubs.
Yeah.
At least from Colby's reports this year.
Yeah.
For me personally, ideally, I would like to see you guys in the schools and show your face there.
I would too, yeah.
So that way you can actually get that report firsthand versus getting it from the the faculty. And then this also will let the younger kids see what you're doing and then kind of encourage them and motivate them as they get older. And maybe this is something that they might wanna do when they're older too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
Yeah, I would I would love to to cuz I I see the students reps also as the voice of the students.
Yes.
And so to even be able to have some conversations about things with like a focus group of middle school students.
Yeah.
Which could happen, you know, maybe even during like a student council meeting after school or lunchtime during school. Just depending on, you know, their schedule.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had, like, I'm just calling to mine, well, one today, but then there was another opportunity where the middle schoolers, we had a group of middle school. You might remember kids that wanted to talk to the policy committee about the dress code, right?
Exactly.
And wearing shorts and the the requirement we had for girl shorts and they came in, it was absolutely wonderful.
It was awesome.
They they were well-prepared, they knew what they needed to talk about, they gave their pitch. And it was, I mean, I was in there like, well, yeah, I don't know why we've got this. Like you totally make sense what you're saying. We'll throw the whole thing out and we'll start over, right? Because they were really good.
Yeah, but so that, you know, they they had been coming to me, so I met with them and said, the school board, you know, policy committee is looking at it. So, you know, let's let's all go and I'll help support you. But those are the kind of things, especially when when policies are being looked at that really connect with students to come and find out. Exactly.
Maybe it would be a good two-way, like they could, our reps could backfeed what the board is, what's coming from the board to the students.
Yeah, I kinda like give the perspective, right? So hear theirs and and take. Yeah, and that's happening at Wentworth. They have, I'll forward it to you, it just came through. They do, I guess, the fifth grade class, you said, they have a project every year and they have to advocate for something. And so one of the kids wrote town council and advocated to replace the track.
Wow.
Yeah, and it's he's has this whole letter written up, he has photos in it. I mean, the whole, it's like a two-page beautiful thing, right?
Yeah.
And so those are the things I think are really cool because if you can feed on that interest with a role model, right? You're a role model to them. And now they're like, oh, now look at, this is something I can do.
Yeah.
When I get to high school.
Yeah, we didn't do that when I was in fifth grade, but that's that's really cool.
Yeah.
Especially considering it's so so like central to, you know, like the schools and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kathy, does the school have a s- a student government?
They have the student council, yes. It's an after-school club.
It might be a neat tie-in where the student rep can work with the student council and say, hey, we've got, you know, there's these policies or this budget. Coming up and we can just seek their feedback.
And I know the advisor too. I was in the student council in many schools.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I could even see, so our student council at the middle school, they've been advocates for what? New chairs for the seventh and eighth grade that came last year. They got instead of the flimsy shower curtains that had gaps and maybe fall off, they advocated and we have full doors. On all of those. Trying to think of some other things, so.
Advocated for those water fountains with the water fillers when I was there.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so they they definitely.
They do quite a bit.
Something with silverware one year, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Eagles club.
The Eagles club, so there have been a lot of things and, you know, right now, we're getting student voice on recess. And the things that they would like for equipment and writing a grant, one of the SEL grants or no SEL. SEL is on my mind.
Essy something.
Yeah, we're working on that for the equipment, so.
So that might be great to even report back to us what they're working on as.
Is it like Wentworth? Wentworth in the elementary schools?
No, middle school of of, yeah, implementing um a recess next year.
Oh.
And there's nothing that says that you and Colby, like if you are interested in doing that and maybe you wanna ask Colby if you two could switch.
Yeah.
Like, there's nothing that says you have to do K two and he has to do middle school.
Trade off every other month, so you're both, you know, both representatives.
For next year too.
Are like fully invested in all of the schools versus like I only know about these and they know about those.
Yes, exactly.
Really good idea.
Yeah, because that's a really cool opportunity, right? Like to get to go and and sit with them and have a.
Yeah.
Learn about the schools more. Yeah, it might be different than when you were there, right?
Yeah, and that's a me, like, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but that sounds more exciting than just like, you know, getting the newsletter, which is cool too. But you know, like, this sounds like a real hands-on opportunity.
Do more.
Yeah.
Cuz like all my communication has just been through email, which is great. And like emails, great, but you know, like, I would still like to do more.
Well, I think you'll be able to say more too, what you're actually in it.
Yeah.
So it makes your work even more valuable.
Yeah, and I could put stuff in my report that's coming from students too, rather than just like the principals.
Yeah, which is super cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds amazing.
Yeah.
Freyla's capturing those.
I said, so I'll document the notes for today.
Oh, good, then I don't have to take the notes. So um that I think we can implement now, like that I don't think we have to wait to do. But what do you think about, like, what are we thinking timeline to implement something like this? Like, could it be next year? Is that because it's we've already done the program of studies? Is that too soon? Like?
ELOs are a little bit more flexible. Um we kinda just keep them on the shelf um and as a student might come. Or maybe if you just, you know, the student's got an interest, an academic interest that we can't meet in the form of a course. Um so I don't think we're bound so much by the program of studies. Um the worry I have would be timing up. Can we develop it fast enough with an election? Like, you know, you guys need a you need a rep soon. Um and so I think that would be that would be tight. Like if we have, we could probably come pretty close to something and maybe get something we feel good enough about that we could say this. We could build the rest of it, you know, in September. But I think that the catch is how much do we need to do before? We have, you know, before we nominate a student. Cuz I think the interesting thing, and I'm thinking about it in my head, is how do we market this to students? Cuz I think we would wanna make sure that a student, you know, does a student have a choice to do the rep spot and not get the ELO credit? That's like that.
That's what I was asking, Grace, is I'm trying to understand a time that someone wouldn't wanna get the credit for it.
Yeah, that's what I.
And it's it's extra work. I mean, that's what we're that's what we're talking about. It's more, it would be more work.
Yeah.
Um. Cuz they have to report back to.
Yeah, it's more accountability, that we'd be adding experiences to it, be more hours. So that's one of the things that's playing out in my head. Might we have a student? Do we market this in a way that says, if you sign up to be a, you know, or if if you win this spot. You're in an ELO. Or do we say, you can do this. And oh, by the way, if you wanna do it for credit, here's the option for you. Here's or here's some options for you. So those are some of the decisions um that I think we we would need to make. We probably need to make them fast if we're talking about next year. What if you were to, what if you were to kinda model it off of like a like an internship? Where where like the ELO or the credit part of it is, they're keeping a binder, the log and some hours and reflection parts of it. And you know what I mean? Like, so you've got the end of your experience as the the rep. There's um a work product essentially that you're keeping and producing or handing in. Almost like, you know, like a like a role internship.
I was just thinking, you like give very easy, it would be very easy in this job to create a portfolio. I mean, you could have a letter to the editor, whether you send it or not.
Digital one?
You could have, yeah, you could do an article for a newsletter. You could like, there are things that you could produce for work.
Your presentations for the board.
Presentations for the board. I mean, you could put together like like concrete work that could be evaluated. And again, it doesn't have to go anywhere. It could just be, it's like I could, I could.
And that would be the extra, that would be kind of, at least from the student's perspective, if you were, if you were saying like, okay, well, the the two aren't. It's not like a zero-sum game, right? It's not like you're the board rep, therefore it has to be credit-bearing ELO. Right? The the extra work would be, you know, that digital portfolio that you're generating.
Yes.
Essentially, as as the board rep.
It'd have to be in some of the wraparound, they'd have to be, they're gonna get a credit, so there'd have to be some benchmarks along the way, which that could be.
Yeah.
A benchmark, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd have to be some things along the way cuz they're earning a credit.
Right, and as as you know, Freyla was mentioning, like tho- those work products could be a variety of things. I mean, it could be. I mean, you know, I was even thinking as as you were talking, I mean, the spotlight award for staff has been such a awesome part of like an embedded recognition at. At board meetings every month. What if there was a student spotlight?
Yeah.
Or group of student spotlight that would be managed.
I'm here for that.
May as well by the reps.
By the reps.
Joe is gonna make a video.
We're gonna start all this tomorrow. Grace will wait now. We're gonna have our first quit right now.
This is too much.
Yes.
We can't stop with the ideas.
I mean, the missing boy, the missing voice at the table is is our career pathways coordinator, right? This is the stuff she does day in, day out. Um so I don't wanna get too far down the road and get too far out in front of her. But I mean, I'd be happy to sit with her, you know, sometime, I don't know about tomorrow, but something maybe next week and just kinda pick her brain from her perspective. Cuz she's gonna know the ins and outs of that more than anybody else. Um I do think it'd be helpful as a first step to have what Freyla was talking about and just have. Yeah, that would be great. Um and if we could take a look at that, we could kinda figure out, you know, how does this sort of stand alone? What does this look like as a standalone experience? Is that, you know, do we have, do we have a couple of options here, right? Maybe we say, hey, this is how you can do this and earn credit. Or this is how you can do this and earn this much credit or more credit.
Do the high schoolers have a required community service?
We don't? I thought I thought we did.
Pulled a bag of goods here. By the reps are doing all the.
Can you write in those notes, Freyla, for the um the the responsibilities that we do have right now outlined, which are the first and the third meetings?
Check it out, it's in there. I've got the whole thing in it.
And they only.
Might be helpful for them to have the committees too, cuz if they have to serve on a committee, that could be one of the wraparound things that's talked about. It might, it might be helpful for them to have the committees too, cuz if they have to serve on a committee, that could be one of the wraparound things that's talked about.
Yeah, and that's optional, and the committees are different, and I was gonna say that, like, the committee, the committee commitment is different. Like, if you were on the billing committee, for example, you would be meeting a lot.
Oh, God.
And if you were not on the billing committee, if you were on the long-range planning committee, that might be a quarterly meeting. So you could, that would, that would be, like, again, somebody who's looking for credit, if you're looking for hours, you might wanna go to a monthly meeting. And there's, there's pol, I mean, I do policy, policy is a monthly meeting.
I, I was thinking more about like what the kid might be interested in, finding.
Yeah, oh, let's list out the committees, sorry, I do that.
Yeah, find, finding.
Right, so then as the career pathway specialist helps to kind of, you know, bolster some other things around there,
That's what I mean about type use, yeah.
they know what those options are.
What that looks like. And one thing we're looking to do, um, before June, before our, our, our next election, is put together a list of our committees, like, what the work actually looks like. So, for example, Jenna's the communications chair, so she's going to write up, this is the work the communications committee this does, this is the time commitment, like low, medium, high, this is how often we're meeting, you know, and so we're going to do that, each committee chair is going to put that together. So that, I think, would be helpful for you too, we just don't have it drafted yet.
That's fine, yeah.
But we could get that to you once it's, once it's done.
That's what I mean about how like, I think we're a little bit up against it, just because in terms of, in terms of getting a, a junior rep, um, that turnaround's pretty quick. So, I mean, we maybe could figure out, I think, you know, Jeff's proposal might be a good interim solution, like, if that's gonna be an option for earning credit, hey, you know what, you can just put together a portfolio, um, you know, and that's gonna earn you X amount of credit, whatever that may be. Um, you know, and, and if you wanna do it this way, that might earn you Y amount of credit or whatever the case may be. The more data details we can have about how you wanna use the position, um, you know, what those time commitments might be, that, that would all be really good. And the sooner you could get that, the better. I think to fully develop this, it might be, you know, next year might be an ambitious timeline, but who knows? I'm not saying it's impossible.
Yeah.
We can always evolve it too.
Yeah, yeah, I think we could definitely evolve it for sure.
I think we should, I think we can pilot it, I think we can pilot it with Grace.
Grace, yeah.
Say guinea pigs, it's right in front of me.
Yep.
Do you want credit, cuz that's a question.
Just teasing him.
Yeah, why not, well, yeah, yeah, why not, cuz you're doing it, yeah.
Is there anything else that'd be helpful for you to have some part of information?
Um, I can't think of anything right now, but I'm sure when I have a conversation with, um, career pathways, there might be some more things that come your way, just some questions or details.
Sure.
Um, I, I did approach her just initially and was like, what do you think of this wild idea? And I know she was excited about it, um, but again, we had a lot of, like, well, what I wonder about, or what is this, or, you know, how is that? Um, so I think anything we can get in terms of detail would be helpful and we can look at it and, and get back to you with any questions we might have.
There be a contact for this board, so that come through?
Yeah, yeah.
And the other thing too with the board meetings, um, we, the July and the August, we let that be optional for the student reps. So, like, I don't know if that's a question or that's a option.
There's only one meeting in July and August, right?
Yeah, yeah, cuz we, we scale back, yeah.
If you're on the computer, do you wanna just glance at the document before you mail it out and make sure I didn't miss anything you wanna add?
Did you hear me about July and August meetings? I think the other thing that's optional, I mean, this is probably too much detail, but we, um, like, uh, the budget workshops, cuz those are during school, the retreats we have, we don't require them to come to those, that, those could be options. I just don't know what that looks like from the school perspective.
The workshop, what was the second that you said?
Um, board retreats.
Rassle bears?
The senior, the senior rep would be responsible for orchestrating the, the junior rep.
This one right here?
The election.
Oh, nevermind. You're way too thorough.
It's over there.
We started talking, I think I want notes.
Yes.
So yours are better. This is really great. All right, I'm super excited about this.
What should I send this?
I can't, I'm taking the class twenty twenty five, I thought we'd.
Who else?
Yeah.
So I just like, every time I'm like, if there's a, for other classes that have been interested, they would have like.
Well, you're like, well, it's.
All right, so I'm going to, if there are no objections, it's, um, six fifty-three, so, um, I think we should adjourn.
Correct, and then hybrid board, does that could be an objection?
But before that, Nate, really, this is really awesome, thank you so much for, for doing this.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, you know.
And thank you, Mike, and thank you, Kathy, this is really.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Yep.
Yeah, all right, if there's no objections, we will adjourn the meeting. Okay, with no objections, the meeting is adjourned at six fifty-four, thank you, I'm sorry, the workshop.